I'd like to call the planning board meeting of Monday, April 11, 2022 to order at 7:02 PM. Here, would you be certain that your phones are turned to mute? Almost forgot that one. Okay. First item on the agenda, I don't believe we have any minutes. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Not for March 29th, so we will move along to the next item, public comment period. Is there anybody with us tonight that would like to bring anything to the planning board? Speak up? I don't see anyone wishing to speak, so I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
This is Mike.
Close the public comment period.
Jim? And do I have a second?
This is Mike, I second.
Okay, Jim to Mike Baker. All those in favor, I raise your hands or speak. There you go, it is unanimous. It is closed. Okay.
Can I ask something?
Yes.
Does everyone on there, I mean here is okay, this is obviously, you know by now, this is an experimental. This is not our first one, the Board of Trustees have meeting, but want to make sure everyone can hear us okay.
Maybe I should ask if I'm yelling.
Oh, your voices come, this is Ronnie, your voices are coming through very clear.
Okay, but I'm not yelling.
No.
Okay, good.
And this is Jim, you're loud and clear and the image of the room is very clear and I can easily see everyone.
Oh, good. It's working.
Jim, can you, can you see any hair on my head growing?
Who was? I don't know. Actually, maybe.
We'll be able to do a study, we'll start watching, we'll see if anything's happening. So, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for special permit 2022 4557. This is the Keegan Medical Center at Ithaca proposing to use the recently purchased former Bonton store and two leased spaces in the shop that is Gamal, located at 40 Cathcart Wood Drive. It is now has a parcel number, tax parcel number 47.1-1-22.1. Proposed renovation would include outpatient medical offices and related administration offices. Clinic and office spaces are permitted uses within the commercial high traffic district with a special permit pursuant to Village Code Section 145-43 D1C and G. The design modifications include a new exterior fenestration and entrance canopy. So I see we have folks with us tonight. Where do we start here?
Kelly wants to give us any updates.
Okay.
Like I'm parking.
Before we go into the parking, so Kelly, you have the floor?
Yes, I submitted some numbers to Brent on the, what we are counting for existing parking spaces and then the number of providers and staff on the building. And the basically, like if we take the zoning count, the number of spaces of the calculated four per provider and one per staff ends up exceeding what the number of parking spots are within the Keegan Medical parcel. Obviously, there's additional mall parking space within, around the mall. So I, that's as far as the communications have gone. I haven't received any other. And then the only other thing we've updated since the last meeting is submitting the short EAF form.
Right.
You mentioned that you had forwarded to me, did you mean to Mike Scott?
I may have. I forget who, sorry. I know you asked, you talked about it in the meeting and I think I may have sent it to Mike.
Yeah, I've got it. What Kelly sent over was as per code for your clinic and office space. For a doctor's office, you would have, you need four spaces per provider and then one per staff. And what Kelly has submitted to me would be 24 providers and 100 staff, so you're looking at 196 spots. At this point, from satellite imaging, we've come up with about 164. Now, the planning board is allowed to waive the minimum number of parking spaces under certain circumstances. What those circumstances could possibly be, in this case, maybe the fact that there are other adjoining and shared parking for the whole mall. The mall itself, little bit of history on that, the mall itself has an excess amount of parking. If you took, if you took each parcel or before, if you took each space and figured the square footage and what the required parking was, the mall actually has more spots than they need. So it just gives you kind of a rundown of what we're looking at.
So as you face this parcel and where the new, where the entrance will be, to the right is the other entrance that used to go between the Bonton and the Bonton Home Store? So that will be people entering there, right? And then to the right of that is Michael's?
Yes.
Okay, so. And that's all shared parking, really?
Yes.
As we discussed a long time ago with the mall folks about how this works, because yeah, people, you can't barriers and have cross things that say somebody has to show a card to park here or something. So it seems if we can make this work, is, how did we get to these standards of four per MD and one per staff?
That's what the required parking is for Village Code.
Do we know how the, how that?
The history of how it came to that, I don't know, I could look it up, I could try to find out.
I mean, does anybody from Keegan Medical, when you kind of figure parking in other places, do you have any sort of stats you could share with us that might give us any direction here?
I don't know the origins of that specific number, but it is a common num, a common calculation among at least local zoning codes. I've seen it in multiple municipalities. But I'm not sure what the origin of it is specifically.
That's pretty much what everybody uses.
Yeah, but would there ever be a time, I mean Kelly, you gave me the maximum here, would there ever be a time that all 24 providers, 100 staff will be there, or is this just what you have total and it's different shifts? Or is this, this is what happens every day?
I'll speak to that.
Yeah, I would say it'd be rare that you'd get all of that, and I think we may have aired a little bit on the high side as well, just to make sure that we do cover, right? Because things change over time, but I would say that we're probably not going to have all providers and staff there at the same time.
Now, in terms of the, so I drove over there and the spacing is pretty decent in terms of, I mean, sometimes you go to a parking lot, it's really tight. And this, you know, when you're backing up, it seemed like there was room enough, so is it based on the sizes that are there now for the spaces?
Yeah, I mean, we took the count of what's there now from the satellites, what's marked out at this point.
Okay.
There's also, sorry Lisa, there's also requirements in the Declaration of Usmen's Covenants and Conditions as to the number of spots and how they can be spaced.
Oh, okay. So that was, well, of course, one of the reasons I'm asking is, you know that I'm hoping we'll be able to put some delineation of where traffic should drive up around the ring area. And I don't, just, just some place so that people just don't go through the parking lot straight through like they do. Because parking lots are treacherous over there. People drive through them. And I just want to be sure that we account for that a little bit, so I'm hoping we can make that work in some way.
And Brett Cross, you remember when we went through this with the Keegan Mall, there were certain spaces that could be reduced due to small vehicles, that was on New York State, wasn't it? You know a lot more about that than I do.
Yeah, their, New York State code does suggest that there's a blend of car sizes that should be, or could, can be taken into consideration if a developer needs to. Instead of a traditional full-size space, which ranges in some municipalities between nine and 10 feet wide. Sometimes you can squeeze them down to eight feet, but only a certain section and with some signage for identification. But in this case, I think, so Mike, you gave a couple of numbers of what would be needed versus what you I think that falls somewhere, I think maybe the number looks like maybe in the 85% range. I think that the code allows, as you mentioned, for the planning board to approve reductions or allow less. And I think that that's, I think there's an allusion to like it's automatic if it's up to 15 or 20% reduction.
Natalie, oh, sorry, Brent.
Yeah, it is, it is a 20% reduction, Brent.
20%.
And then we also, the planning board also needs to take consideration, there is public transportation that does come there, so you're not going to have everyone there driving, so I'm not pro or against this, I'm just giving you information then.
Natalie, I would say, what is the ECCR, what limitations does that pose?
So that requires at least not less than five paved full-size spaces for each 1,000 square feet of building floor area.
Okay, I'll have to look at that, okay.
Yeah, it's Section 5.3. It does require a minimum width of nine feet on the center, and then depending how they're angled, it dictates width and angle of degrees and stuff. But again, I think, I think one way to remedy that, all the questions with the declaration and covenant, and I was going to bring those up later when we got to any parking lot changes, is just to require as part of the special permit approval from PMI NewCo as to any of the designs. It's not really our business to make sure they're conforming to the declaration and covenant that we're not enforcing, but we should just get proof that they have, that PMI NewCo is okay with everything.
Right. Well, we're going to need to have some sort of layout and design, right? I mean, we're going to need to have a parking lot design at some point. And the other thing I think that I had forgotten to bring up last time, and then I was talking with our mayor about it, was do you plan to do electric vehicle charging stations, much like you have at the hospital? I think that would be something that we would think might be important also to incorporate in.
I wouldn't say we haven't gotten that far down the path yet, but currently we were anticipating that, no.
I thought perhaps, I mean, it seems to be kind of the wave of the future. And some bikes, maybe bike racks even. Somewhere along, I don't know whether it's the parking area or whether that's something that goes with the building, but those were the other thoughts that I had, you know, pursuant to a parking.
Landscaping plan.
And the landscaping plan. But yeah, and I do, I don't know if you have any ideas about how to make the parking lot safer and incorporate some islands in that regard.
Yeah, I mean, we were hesitant to go too far with the parking, given we're already below your zoning numbers, which, I mean, the more we add islands, the less parking we're going to have.
Right.
So I think we're kind of looking for what number, if we're going to try to add islands, then what number parking spots are we going to be at that's acceptable?
No, I was, yeah, I, I came across some guidelines that were developed for the village rather a long time ago, like 20 years ago. They had some specifics for parking lot design, but I was, I really wanted to talk to Mike about that as to how that might work, because I think they had, they weren't big islands, but they had every 12 spaces, they put an island with a tree. Now, I think but I don't know, just need to sort of see it on paper, I guess, as to whether and we could share that, they gave an example of it, but I think more importantly is delineating where people come around the buildings and continue on around the buildings as they do now. The bus goes around, you know, kind of around the outside of all the buildings. I think somehow we have to delineate that from the parking area, cars for your parkers.
Lisa, I would offer at least an idea of what might be a good number to give them guidance on, and that would be as if you took and gave them the right or the instruction to utilize the code's maximum reduction, which would be down to 80%. So I think Mike Scott said that they counted somewhere around 164.
Yeah.
80% of 196 would be 157, so there's about seven spaces right off the top of my head that you could, you could, we could suggest that they try to find a nice place to fit those in.
Okay. How does the board feel about that? Yes? Yes, Pat says yes. How about any?
If the parking lot plan added some more greenery and made it more aesthetically pleasing, I would be fine even going less than that, honestly. I think having shade, trees, greenery in that parking lot, to me, is more important than the total number of spots, because the mall has a ton of spots and people are going to park wherever they park anyway. Some people will park at Target, go grab something and then walk down to the medical center too. So I'm not very focused about the exact number of spots. I'm more, the layout more important to me.
Brent?
I would point out that in a traditional site plan review where there's, there's not an ECTR type arrangement, that that language comes along with a caveat that if we allow them to reduce by 20%, that they reserve green space on their property to, for the eventual, in the worst-case scenario, if we came to the conclusion that the 20% was needed,
Right.
have the space available. In this case, you've got the CCR agreement, which certainly gives lots, lots of spare spaces available, so I would think you could easily waive that. And considering that you've got an abundance of shared spaces, you know, I don't think Monica's idea is a bad one, just that, you know, what number you want to give them, that would be up to you, but I at least thought that the 80% number gave a target to start talk discussions.
Yeah, I'll build just a little bit on what Monica said too, and I think that you know, setting a spot, setting aside spaces for safety is one of the concerns. And if we're going to set them aside for safety, in addition to that, they should be used for green space. So it's not just, you know, I don't want you to obviously stick a tree in the pavement somewhere, because I don't think that, you know, improves the safety at all. But I do think that, you know, one of the things that we're looking for is to make sure that it is safer, and people drive all over the place, cross lots, all over the place in that lot, because there's not, you know, a lot of, you know, spaces utilized there for various things. I think Monica's right, I think a lot of people will park it, you know, one area of the mall and walk to the other. I don't see any reason to think that would not be the same case here. So I would push for that, I would say, you know, yes, we're looking for safety. Along with that, since we are trying to, you know, create these things, whether they're islands or whatever you want to call them, dividers, however that looks. I don't think we're asking, you know, for you to take up, you know, eight spots in a row, you know, every, you know, every so far on either side, but I think you can introduce some things there that would increase safety and increase greenery, especially on the front side of the mall there, that everyone can see on the villages as they're kind of in that area. I think that that's a very good goal, and I, you know, I for one would, you know, be fully supportive of, you know, lessening the restrictions on parking to increase safety and improve the parking lot aesthetically.
Anybody else have any comments? So last time, so the parking, the landscaping, I would say that the planning board, you have all the building interior stuff, but that's to come. What else are we overlooking here?
Well, at this point, at this point, to make a list for you, Kelly, would be the, a parking lot design that would be figured for about 157 spaces and possibly some green area along with the required number of handicap spaces for, as per New York State. And if there is any type of, did you want to see any type of landscaping plan in the front? I know at one point Kelly mentioned that.
Trees out or whatnot. I was going to say, do you have already in mind what you want to do out front of the building? I know you want to.
There should be a landscaping plan in the set that was submitted.
I thought there was something already, yeah.
Yeah, it calls out like the flowering trees and the fencing and planting.
Yeah, I thought I remembered, okay.
So if you add these spots, if you could just add into there what you'd hit plan, would plan on putting in these, in the parking lot area.
In the parking lot, right, right.
You know, I'd be happy to sort of, can we send some of this over to her?
I can send that over.
Because it is helpful, just to sort of get a visual of some of the ideas of what they got. And they have some very specific parking lot, and we're working on that as well, so I think it would be important to see some of that stuff.
Okay, so Kelly, I'll send you over some information that Lisa has here, along with what we just talked about, since you have a record of it.
Can I just ask how many square feet the Bonton spaces?
Just the Bonton without the rental is 52, I want to say 850.
Okay. 52,850, is that right?
I think that's right for just the Bonton without the rental space. I might.
Mike is going to go see, check that, if you don't have it offhand.
Yeah, just give me one second, I just don't have that plan open at the moment.
I think he has the rolled up ones, I forgot. If you would like a copy of those, he has extras, I think, the big guys. A lot of space though.
Sorry, 52,443.
52,443.
Yep.
I was reading it just as Kelly was saying.
Sorry.
We have confirmed that you're right, Kelly. Okay. Does that give you what you need to figure that stuff from the ECCR?
Yeah, we'll have to, PMI NewCo will have to be involved in some level.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I think next, unless somebody has something else they want to bring up, and I don't see.
Mike, I put a note, John Gaetano from Keegan Medical Center. Kelly, are we going to lose any spaces with the handicap with the side striped space for people that are handicapped to get out?
The number that I had sent to Mike included the new design for the handicap, so with the handicap new design, we are, because there were only two spots there before and we're increasing to six, so we were losing two, two or, actually, I think three, because I think before they were just marked and they didn't have the side striping. So we were losing three, because it was one per each row or call, yeah, row, I guess.
Okay. Okay, so I think you, Kelly, you gave us your, the short environmental assessment form. We haven't heard back yet. The vote on it tonight, but it would be good for us to quickly go through it with everybody to be sure there aren't any questions or changes that we would like to see made. I don't know if everybody, has everybody had a chance to look at this? So let's see, let's start with you, Pat, do you have any changes on, that you wanted to see on the first page?
I didn't see.
Anybody on page, the first page? Going through the proposed action and 1, 2, 3, the land uses that occur, all of that, no change there? I didn't see anything either. Going to page 2. Proposed action is permitted use. Alter natural landscape. It doesn't adjoin a critical environmental area. I, will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels? We hope so, even though it's, it's not.
I struggled with that one, because I was like, well, is it above what the mall is right now or above what the mall was targeted for?
We were all thinking it's sort of like, oh, traffic, yes.
I was going to say, Lisa, I would check that as yes, and that's not a bad thing, I mean, and it's prepared for that. I think the infrastructure and everything is there for it, but yes, it will increase what, what's there now.
I suppose we could do that, does everybody agree with that? Do we want to, okay, so we want to change the no to a yes?
Yeah.
That is number 8. We'll change from 8A. And public transportation services and bicycle routes are available, yes. Proposed action to meet or exceed the state energy code you will meet energy code where applicable to new construction. I guess there are laws already in place to do, for that, that at the state level, is that correct? So yes. It's connected to an public and private water supply, the public. Yes. Same with wastewater utilities. It is not contiguous to an archaeological site, et cetera, nor is it located in area designated as sensitive for some sort of preservation or archaeological inventory. So that's all no. 13, does any portion of the site adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands? No. And it wouldn't encroach on anything, so that's all fine. 14, the type of habitat type suburban? Don't see, yeah, and does it contain any species of animal or associated habitat listed by the state as threatened or endangered? No. Is it in the 100-year flood plan? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? Now, you checked yes here, what was your intention on that?
I mean, there is stormwater system existing at the site, so that was.
But well, I, when I read this, I sort of like, okay, well, the proposed I think it's, if there isn't a stormwater system is what it's looking for, but it is a little vague, I will say, but what do you think?
Well, it asks if it, if the proposed action.
Oh, yes, is what you're going to do, going to make a change to that, and I think it's no.
Brett, you run.
I guess the only thing that may impact now is if we start adding additional curbs to the parking lot, we'll just have to look at flows of water across the parking lot, because that is a sloped parking lot. So I'm not exactly sure what that impact will be until I finish the parking lot design.
Okay, well, yes provides a little more oversight, right?
If we do yes, then the answer to A, will the discharges flow to adjacent properties? Yes, it probably will.
Yeah, and that was another one where I was a little unclear, if you consider adjacent properties, adjacent parcels connected to the mall, in which case, yes.
Okay, I think it is yes, probably.
So if you have all three of those.
Yes, okay.
And then you pretty much explain it, that you're not really. And then you pretty much explain it, that you're not really, the, the actual action doesn't produce any additional stormwater discharge.
Then it's existing.
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Uh, does the proposed action include construction that was built upon a bit of water or other liquids? No. Um, I think the others are all fine, proposed action were in the location of enclosed, no solid waste. And, um, the last one is the site in the subject of remediation for hazardous wastes, no. So, um, I think unless we hear from the, so what changes, Kelly? Um, is that she resubmits or do you make the changes?
Um, she can, if, if Kelly wants to make the changes, just send them to me. Otherwise, I can make them and I, but I have to send it back to her to sign.
Okay.
Brett's got his hand up.
Oh, Brent?
Yeah, I should have spoke up back. I don't know what the question number is, but on wastewater treatment, I think that it's likely that the answer is, well, the answer is it's served by wastewater facilities. It would be probably a good idea to know what is the associated amount of sanitary discharge that'll be associated with the daily operations? And give us some kind of rationale or comparison to what was, uh, being produced or what was being allowed for during, when it was the retail space.
The, the, are we talking quantity or are you talking about because it's a medical?
Well, I think, I think both. I mean, there's, uh, I think that we should just have knowledge of that, you know, not so much in the sense that I think it's problematic, but I think that we should just, you know, know what those numbers are.
Is that something you can calculate for us, Kelly?
I should be able to get that from the engineers.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
Okay, so that was number eleven, that we're gonna get additional information about the quantity of estimated quantity. And perhaps somewhat the type, but I, I think we already started talking about some hazardous waste in the past. Okay?
Yeah, in terms of wastewater, there, there shouldn't be anything.
Different.
Or, yeah, it's just like hand washing sinks and toilets.
Right.
Right.
Okay, good. So would, certainly I would expect by the next meeting, we would have had a response from the county.
Yeah, they'd be required to by now.
Yeah, so, um, we should be able to move that along next meeting. Okay, is there anything else that somebody wants to bring it forward? Okay, great. Moving along then, I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm not sure I'll have a full parking lot design in time for review for the next meeting, but I'll just keep in touch with Mike on timing for that.
Well, we don't need it necessarily for them anyway quite yet.
Okay, okay.
Take your time with it and make it beautiful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next is our review of our proposed tree conservation and replacement law. And Mike has made carefully an effort to put it into some format that looks kind of like our code. I'm still having some problems with it in terms of how it's divided up. And I, I don't know whether I'm right yet. I want to hear what everybody else to say.
I have a question. Um, I happen to have something I need to do tonight. And I was just wondering if you didn't think that you would need me for the, this topic I would like to sign on.
Okay, I think we can, we can cycle back and get your input at another time, Brent.
Okay, great.
Thanks for coming for that, for this first part, though. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thanks, bye.
Okay. So. Who wants to start?
Um, can we, can we practice having Mike put it on the screen so I can, people on Zoom can see it as well?
He has to run into his other office. We haven't figured that out yet.
I actually don't know, Monica, whether I could do that. I think what I'm gonna have to have him to do is either sign my computer in by sending it the link or download stuff onto this computer for me to share.
The way to do it. I said, I think, actually, do you have a thumb drive?
I don't have that set up right now, Monica.
That's fine. I was just curious if we're, since we're testing out the system, you know, let's just go all out.
How it works, I know.
Next time, Monica.
So, um.
Let me say that I started looking through it. I haven't gotten all the way through it, but I will have some red lines and comments from Mike before the next meeting, so we can share it with everybody.
Okay, um, I, I, I had some just thoughts. One of the things I did is I, I came in and I said to Mike, um, how is this going to work? At a thing, as the mall parcels come before us? This tree ordinance going to work? And so, we don't really know, because it's something to think about. But, um, and, and obviously if it's not enacted by a certain time, certain parcels may not have to comply, I suppose, but if we think about this, you know, how does this apply to something, the mall is such an unusual case? Because it's already built. Um, I just don't know, but it triggers, a special permit will trigger this law. So it was just one of the things to think about as we're going through this is to whether we have to put a provision in there for that.
Well, I think like, do you want to use Keogah Medical as a, as an example, Lisa? Like, I mean, there's, there's no trees there, right?
Right, well, there are, there are about three, I think.
Yeah, I mean, but, but I think there's, there's a good, because I thought about that too. It's funny. I thought about, I said, oh, no, most of that's vegetation. That's different than we're cutting down trees. It's not like, you know, they're gonna go and clear cut the lot because there's nothing in the lot. And so I, I, I actually, it's funny, I used that as a kind of example as I read through it and I thought about, oh, okay, well, you know, they're not removing more than twenty-five percent of, or I, unless maybe they're going to cut one of the three trees they have down, um, but I, yeah. And I think it's a different amount of the mall lots.
Sorry, this is Simon. I'm, I'm just gonna jump in. Um, i- i- this was written so that places like the mall and places that are devoid of trees, if they go through a special permit process, um, or if some, or they go through a subdivision, they have to bring it up to the standard. So they would have to put in the trees, and in their case, it might be difficult to put in the trees because it's mall. So that's why they pay, pay into the tree bank and we put trees in somewhere else.
Well, I was gonna say, I think, I, I, I said too, okay, so they're not chopping down any trees. However, there is a minimum tree density that must be met regardless. And so there it is. But I mean, it's, it's kind of interesting to think, as we're going through this, okay, how does this apply to this particular project or any project that we have in front of us? And how, how does it work? And does it work? And if it works, great. You know, we've got, we're, we've got it. Go ahead.
Well, if, I think the original, wasn't, Simon, wasn't the original intention of this to try to get so people don't remove a bunch of trees without the, having to replace them or whatnot? I'm thinking that is it possible to, let's say, for example, take the mall with those, well, actually take this property. On that parcel, there are no existing trees. Um, is it possible to put something like that under the exemption? Or are we going to require them every time that business changes in there and needs a special permit or for a recent comeback special permit, we're gonna be hitting them for ten, fifteen trees every time? I mean, that, just something to think about, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I think as you look at it too, you know, but it's, you know, compare this lot to something like where Beaumont was, where there was nothing before, right? Beaumont was trees. They cut the trees down, they built stuff and they paved it. This is already set up. There's not really, other than, you know, some of the plantings they have there. Unless they go and start, you know, tearing up pavement, there's not really a suitable place for them to plant trees. It's not like you can say, oh, well, I've got, you know, all that greensprout, that lawn over there where I could plant trees. They don't really have any lawn.
That's a tree bank. That's where we, that's where I would say we go into the tree bank. So my intent, I, I, my intent that a mall, like the mall, would have to put in trees or pay into the tree bank. I mean, I, unless someone's got a valid reason why they shouldn't, I don't really see it any other way.
I, I, yeah, no, I look at it and see, I, I don't know if that's in the right spirit of things. They, you know, when you, when you look, when you compare Beaumont to something like this, I mean, Keogah Medical wants to come in or whoever it is, whether it's a restaurant or a movie theater, whatever it is, they don't really have a suitable place to do that. And I don't know if the spirit is right and us saying, hey, thanks for buying that and doing something good for the village. We're gonna ding you more for no trees now and you don't have any place to plant them, so we're gonna make you pay into the bank. I don't know if that's the right spirit of things.
Well, I have a question that kind of goes to what Mike was just saying, that if a different use goes in there, are you recharging them for the tree bank?
That's what he, yeah.
No, I would, oh, I would say that would be an exemption because they, you could say, well, we've already paid into the tree bank for this parcel and here's the, you know, the evidence, the proof of that. Um, and so that would be cause for exemption. I mean, that would be up to the planning board, whoever is on the planning board at that point in time, but I would think that would be cause for exemption. But I am, the way this was written as well is because there are lots that were getting, trees were getting cut down. Um, and we talked about if they subdivide later on. I mean, you look at like Sundown Farms, I mean, they could cut down all the trees there and there wouldn't be a whole lot we could do about it, but if they decided then to subdivide, then they would have to put those trees back in, so uh, that's, that's kind of how it was written. I mean, if people decide that they don't want the mall to have to put in the trees or pay into a tree bank, that's fine. That wasn't, that wasn't my idea though.
Oh, we can't hear whoever's speaking. Is that Monica?
To put in all, all the trees. We can exempt them from say fifty percent, but have them pay a little something before.
Uh, yeah, I was sort of thinking along those lines myself, Monica, thinking, okay, let's see what they do coming up at the parking lot. And then perhaps negotiating, but this is, it, the mall presents a real problem is the point. And, and this is, and, and you know, it was just like, oh, how is this going to work? And we really need to figure that out. Because we, we need to be consistent with everyone, right? We don't want this to be, I mean, we can be flexible to a certain point, but only to a certain point, otherwise it's very subjective and there's no reason to have the law. So.
Yeah, that type of commercial project is. Yeah, if you've got all pavement, pretty much all pavement, or hey, let's take a look at the actual, the mall subdivision itself, with the amount of spaces actually there, they couldn't possibly put up enough trees to, to meet this, so.
Do we have to have, you know how we have a planned sign areas? Where they have a maximum of, of signage, square footage that can be in that set? So that we're just not, can we have something similar to that perhaps? That would have to do with, you know, pull they'll hold them to some standard, because I still would like them to contribute something.
Yeah, in general, the planned sign areas are your, your malls, your strip malls, that stuff where you have, yeah, I mean, I can see where you're going with this.
And maybe we have to do this something a little bit different for the tree in those, in those mall areas, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, take a look at all these. I mean, they have no green space.
No, I mean, that, well, yeah. And every, every time I go over there and people are careening across the parking lot and the water is flowing down into the, wherever, you think, gee, wouldn't it be good if they had some islands here to direct water and the whole business? So it seems that we could, I don't want to exempt them though, I don't.
We're about twenty-five percent, rather than thirty tree units per acre. It's, I can't do math, sorry, it's late.
I don't want to. I think we have to figure this out. I really do. And so, I mean, everybody be thinking about this, I guess, um. Any other thoughts?
Uh, no, I, I think as you look around the village here, I think for the most part, the three malls, one, two, three, yeah, uh, those are, those are the things that come to mind the most for me, like the biggest primaries. You look at other places that have a large pavement area, they also have some green space where they could do something like this, or it wouldn't be as burdensome to say, hey mall, you have to go up and tear a pavement up in the middle of your parking lot, which is gonna reduce the parking spots and causes, it just causes another issue. So, and I'm not saying exempt then by any stretch of the imagination. Um, I, I just think we do need to think about it and maybe come up. And now, I don't know if it's just for the malls or if it's some other condition where we do need to have something else in place, but I agree with you, Lisa, we have to think about it carefully because the minute that there is some gray area or some way out for something, other people are gonna exploit that. And that's not right either, and they will, they absolutely will exploit it. Doesn't matter if it's a developer or residential, they'll figure out some way to try to exploit it. So we need to be pretty clear in what the attention of that exemption is for.
Simon, when you were working on this, did you come across anything at all?
Uh, no, I don't see, it wa- I, I don't, haven't seen any law that has any sort of, uh, you know, we're gonna split up our high density versus our medium versus our residential versus our commercial, um. But there's always a relief valve, and I think the, you know, there is a relief valve in this law, and maybe it needs to be teased out a little bit more or made a little more clear that this all goes to the planning board and they can make the decision. So there are exemptions. And it, I mean, it doesn't have to be a one hundred percent or a zero percent, it could be anything in between. Um, and maybe that just needs to be written in there, like a little stronger, um. Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't know how to go around that, or if we just say that these mall areas only have to do it at twenty-five percent. But I kind of wanted to get away from that because I was trying to get away, you know, when we first met, everyone was saying, get away from the guidelines. We need to tell people this is what you need to do and be very strong about it. So then I took away the guidelines and made it very strong and, and now I'd be putting guidelines back in. Um, so I, I would rather keep it simple and just say that, you know, there are exemptions, go to the planning board. And this would be a perfect case where you guys would say, well, instead of doing the hundred percent, do the twenty-five percent and you are gonna be paying into the tree bank, because there really isn't a place to put trees other than in the parking lot.
True.
Which you would requi- require anyway as part of the, uh, like law standard.
Okay.
It does give us more leverage to be like, we want twelve trees in the parking lot. We'll waive the minimum requirement if you give us twelve trees in the parking lot, right? Like that kind of thing.
Okay. Got to really give this some thought because the mall is, is just a different animal. But, you know, Keogah Medical being the first one presumably that's gonna come before us. So it's gonna keep coming up, so we have to have some sort of plan or guidelines for us that we follow or have something in mind um, to provide some consistency too for all of that. That's the thing. Um, and maybe the malls are even a little different, but you want to treat each mall, all of the parcels at, at the shops at Eskomall the same, I would think. Um, and then maybe the others are, it's different because they are different and it is something. So if we can think about that for next time, then I think we better get on that. So who else has some, I have some this too, mostly, the one thing I, I had asked Mike about was, I noticed, I went through it just to be sure that everything that, um, was in the last. Just to be sure that everything that, um, was in the last. Version was included. Um, enforcement, Mike, you said it does not.
No, your enforcement is, is in section seventy-five, basically overseas. Every, every code, every law of the village is handled the same way.
The, the only thing that I didn't know is that we were going to. Do something of, the, the reason that I, I questioned, I guess, was. In other ways, enforcement is based on some fee, right? And in this case, isn't it, wasn't it supposed to be based on the market value of a tree or something? At the time, and so it's somewhat different. It isn't going to just be a straight two fifty or didn't we agree, isn't that what we discussed, I thought?
Yeah, three fifty. It's going to be a moving number.
Yeah, it's not going to be the same as some of the other enforcement. So do we need to spell that out?
That's. Look at that as I go through. It is spelled out and how much it'll be for the tree bank. Um, but for.
It would, what the, what the, I thought the last verse. Was. Enforcement will be at the discretion of the code officer. For each additional tree removed from the property. A fine will be issued in a dollar amount equal to the cost. Is meant as in section.
Yeah, I, if, so if I just put that in there as the enforcement, then I can also add in there that all other. Um, violations.
Okay.
Will be handled as per section seventy-five.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
So if I, you want me to add that in there then?
Yeah, I really do, I think so. I just want, I don't want there to be any confusion about how this. Is supposed to work. The other thing was, so then. Determining the tree unit value was this chart, right? And then what happened to our definitions? Do they go somewhere in an appendix also?
Yeah, definitions go in the beginning of one forty-five.
Oh, way in the beginning of one forty-five, along with the other, like mobile home and all that stuff?
Yeah, and, and Simon and I were talking about this and the appendix, the final version, the appendix.
Will be the table.
The table.
Okay. So I think the other changes that I have, oh, I guess one of the things was. Of any substance from my point of view, otherwise it was somewhat styled changes was. Doing, using interchangeably replanting trees and. As opposed to replacing trees. And I'm thinking most of the time, nobody's going to replant a tree, are they? From their property? And is there a difference? Because I think I would prefer replacing.
You're talking about E one.
Um. You talk about, where do I have? Oh, on, oh, it's not, just a moment, it's under C two. I. It's planned conditions general, where possible replanted trees. But I'm assuming it's not. Just. Isn't it just tree, you do, is there the difference to my brain? Or just trees?
I think I just used those words interchangeably and I didn't mean anything by it, so. I should just, or you should just pick one, and it's probably replace, I think you're right, replanting sounds like you're. Taking that tree out and putting it somewhere else, so replaced is probably the better word.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that you didn't intend something different between those two words. Okay, yeah, then I would go with replaced. So, um. Oh, well, I think we should, I should submit my changes to you and we should have, does, who else has changes?
I'll have like red line. Formating changes, but I have a question as to enforcement on B one.
Enforcement, B one, removal of more than twenty-five percent of trees from any tax parcel.
Yeah, I am just concerned absent like. A tally of trees on every parcel, if you, absent clear cutting where it's very obvious that they removed that many trees. If you want to try to enforce that, having a record of the number of trees taken down. Might be dubious. I guess it depends how much you're going to try to enforce that.
It's if it's triggered first of all by a special permit, right, or subdivision.
No, that's not how I read it.
Now, this is where, this is.
Oh, this is from Amy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see what you mean. I almost had the inventory, everything.
Yeah, could you just use the Google Maps, the satellite images? I mean, twenty-five percent is a pretty obvious number, you'll see like. Sections cut out, would that be appropriate?
Does Google map update, I mean, I just. I don't know how often Google map updates and then could they have said, well, I took, if the Google map was from twenty eighteen. I took out trees in twenty twenty, this wasn't enacted till twenty twenty-one.
See, I see where, Natalie, you're going with this because if. If I claim someone's removed more than twenty-five percent and they say, yeah, prove it.
Right.
And I don't have documentation, I've got nothing.
Yeah, like my neighbor just clear cut his front yard, but I don't have pictures of that beforehand to know how many trees were there.
Um, this section, uh, the twenty-five percent just came out of a discussion that I had with Mike. Where we were talking about some of the properties down the bottom of our drive, um. And we were trying to, well, I was trying to write it into this law. To prevent that from happening where people just clear cut and they're not going to subdivide, maybe they will in the future and they would have to replace at that point. Um, but who knows when that would be? And so I just picked this arbitrary number of twenty-five percent in. You know, the, the calendar year, um, I, my intention was always that. It would be, you know, we wouldn't really enforce that unless people started complaining, unless it was a clear attempt to try to clear cut a lot. If I went down to the bottom of dark drive though, if I really had to prove it, I don't think it would be that difficult because there's a lot of stumps there that you could count. Um. And, and I would always imagine that, you know, Mike would say, hey, you know, Dave, you cut down more than twenty-five percent of your trees and I'm like, yeah, I did. Uh, and if it became a fight, you know, is it a fight worth?
Yeah, once they have to pay into the tree link, they might not say that they did. Just a thought, I mean, I'm sure. I don't know how long a stump would be in the ground, so if I took out, I'm not even like just gone the twenty-five percent, but if I took out trees this year. Then more trees in, in two years. I don't think the stumps from this year would be there anymore, for you to know.
They would unless you ground them.
Unless they took them out.
Oh, I suppose they take them out.
And I, neighbor Bob has taken them out.
Oh, he took them out?
Oh, yeah, he's at Yolde over there. He's in the town though, don't worry, we're in the town.
All right. Well, it's a little late anyway because it's not enforced yet. We don't have anything to enforce quite yet, that's why we got to keep going with this.
So yeah, that's just one thing that I, I couldn't really. Get, uh, the enforcement issue out of my head with, but I understand the purpose and the issue with. Not wanting to clear cut. What, what Simon was saying and then someone clear cut before they go, apply for a permit.
Yeah.
But then they'd have to just add the trees back in. Under B two.
Because of the minimum depth or.
Yeah.
The minimum density requiring kind of covers it.
Mm-hmm.
Regardless of whether there were trees prior and so, you know. But yeah, okay, so you want to think about that?
Yeah.
All right. So those seem to be the only area, well, the mall kind of, we need to be thinking about some ideas.
Hey, I have a, a quick kind of idea with that parking lot situation. So there's a whole section in the. Local law about parking lots, where you have to be within forty feet. So we could just enforce the parking lot portion and waive the tree density part, right? Because it's in the parking lot.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, that's a good thought.
And the other thing would be. Double jeopardy, so to speak.
Yeah, what if somebody else comes in?
You know, if, if someone's already been hit once.
We might as well hit him again.
Are we not going to hit him again? Or are we going to hit him again?
Well, I think it's up to the discretion of the planning board. That's the problem if you're, if you don't have it spelled out actually, is it really is up to the discretion, but you know what? Planning cultures come, change over time and what people want changes over time, so it could be appropriate.
So we put in there penalties based on boot of planning board.
That's about right.
I mean, how, how quickly do you get special permits one after the other for the same parcel? I mean, we're talking decades and like. Especially for the mall, like you're not going to have a special permit for this parcel in five years again, like. You know, this is like a twenty, maybe thirty year, and if they don't do the parking lot correctly and trees die. Then it should be in the planning board's best interest to reinforce it, right? So that we still maintain the tree density.
I, I for example, would, would certainly love to see if in the lighting thing, although. Is, you know, bring it into current code, whatever it is. I mean, it's probably not realistic at this point, but it's something you then would could waive, but you'd have to go through and justify it.
Yeah, where, where I see this happening is take the Tripphammer Mall, for example, where you've got. All different types of businesses, but none of them own their own section. It's basically the, it's. So if someone comes in, and I think there's close to twenty-six. Different businesses there, if someone comes in and they change. Their use. That would require them to get a special permit. Then the whole mall.
Would have.
Would have to.
New trees in.
And then someone else does it.
Right, again.
The whole parcels again, that's so, this is this, I'm just giving you things that people are going to think of, you know, we talked about.
Yes. Okay, so we need to, all right.
So think about that also.
Oh, thanks, I will. Um. So, but, but the difference. In a funny way, or is that they are at the mall here will own their parking lot, they own their parking lot. Even though it's shared. They own it. And now over at Tripphammer, isn't it owned by the?
The whole facility, the whole parcel is owned.
It's one parcel.
Parcel.
I see.
So that parcel is getting numerous special permits.
Right. Okay, we have to divide and conquer this, I think.
The renters, the one. Generating a special permit, right, not the.
Not the owner.
Yeah, the renter would be, but it's on that parcel that is owned by the. That parcel's owned by.
So, in that case, it's, it's what is the special permit governing? Is it the parcel or the building?
Special permit is for parcel and the building would be the same.
Yeah, they don't, there's no way, okay.
Can I, can I just follow up with just an idea maybe to think about? Um, so if the mall is a special, what is it called, a special sign area, is that what?
Oh, there's a planned sign area where an entire mall, you know, is entitled to two thousand square feet of signage. So nobody can come in with this huge giant thing and then can't have a little guy.
So if we, if we parcel out planned signed areas. And say that parking lot tree requirements will be enforced, but tree densities will be waived. Would that be a good compromise? So when someone comes in like the Alvis. They have to do the whole parking lot, but they only have to do it once, because then they'll be in compliance.
But does all these own, they don't own that entire parking lot?
No, no, but the, but the Tripphammer Mall though.
Own the entire parking lot, so then the. The tenant's special permit is going to ding. The lit, the owner's parking lot.
And I don't see why that's such a huge problem, I mean, because we want trees in parking lots. So if we're going to, you know, we can give them a time frame to get it done. In the next five to ten years, you have to put all these trees in. You know, maybe that's a reasonable thing to ask because we want trees in parking lots, because otherwise trees will never be put in the parking lot ever, right?
Right.
That goes back to malls being a different beast.
Yeah.
Back to what we talked about originally is maybe we should handle malls differently.
Okay, I think, I think we have to do a little research to see if there's anything that we can. There's got to be, I mean, we're not the only people that have this problem. How do you retrofit a mall to kind of? Have some sort of landscaping, you know?
You know, to Monica's point, maybe it's not just malls, maybe it's anything that we feel, and, and again, not to single out certain things, but it's. Things that need to be brought up to code or brought up to, you know, meet this new, whether it's a. Oh, whether, maybe it's the CFU parking lot pretend, now I know that they have trees, but maybe they're in a similar, similar situation, we say, okay, well, you've got this amount of time to. You know, come to code on this, right? You're not grandfathered in, because that's not what we want to do. You know, we won't moving forward to be able to apply this consistently everywhere. But there needs to be some sort of relief for that. With us wanting to, you know, meet, meet the, you know, meet the intent of this new law, so I, that's a good idea, Monica, I like that. I don't know how to implement it, but it's a good idea.
Okay. Anything else? Um. As I said, the other things I had were mostly, I don't think I had any. They were more, whether we should break something into certain pieces and, and so that it, it's easier to see. Something is required, um.
Pardon me? The formatting.
Yeah, it's mostly formatting, um. And I was, I kept looking at our special permit section, the one forty-five, where first you have the general stuff and then you have. So I was wondering whether, for example, under C two. Is tree replacement plan conditions, perens general. I'm not a real fan of paren, parentheses frankly, when, unless necessary, so I was thinking, maybe. It is general conditions required for the tree replacement plan. And then we list, because that applies to everything, right? And then you have. Tr, uh, street scape tree conditions, and then you have parking lot. Conditions. Do you know what I mean? As just, just the way we break it down. Thinking about how this, the special permit was, but I can see how hard it is to put this into the same format. Our existing code. Because what we did for general conditions in our special printer, we have general conditions. And then we actually have a separate section where we have that additional conditions for certain special permit or subdivision uses. And maybe we should use that same sort of.
Okay.
Thing. I don't know if, I would, I would like others to weigh in on that, or especially Natalie. Um, to see if she thinks that's reasonable, but other than that, really very ahead.
Somebody, if everybody wants to send me what they think, I'll incorporate it and I'll, and I'll make sure that I highlighted and read what we changed.
Okay.
And date it.
And date it and put page numbers on this thing, would you put page numbers on?
Page number, wow, you guys. Pushing my limits.
I know, I, I've been pushing for that for over ten years. My legacy, remember your pages. Uh, it's hard to discuss.
Yeah, put it in the footer, right?
Wherever you can make it work, sometimes it's, we're using old formatting and sometimes you can't make it work. It's very strange, but well, somebody would better. Uh, okay, so if everybody would submit changes to Mike. Were there suggestions?
If, if you send me changes, because all of you have the, the doc, or all of you have this document in Word. If you send some changes or make changes, please highlight them for me so that I can see, I can take everybody's and kind of. They can know whose it was, that kind of stuff.
Oh, I usually track changes, it's not good?
Um, yeah, I, yeah, go ahead and do that.
Oh, well, I can, I can do it and, oh, so you want us.
It'd be easier to see.
I'm just.
Right.
I'm just being bossy.
So you want us to bold it or highlight it in some way? So you want us to bold it or highlight it in some way?
Every other letter bolded.
Remember you're being ordered, I'm just gonna remind you. Okay, um, trustee report. Was there a trustee?
Yeah, that's, that's me, that's me, hold on. Ah, they really didn't, they talked about the budget. Um, now I'm able from memory, because my notebook is in the other room. Um, so they talked about the budget, the sewer project apparently is going way over budget because of COVID. $2 million over budget. Um, I have my, I have my Cliff Notes, he's walking around the living room right now. Um, and so there was some back and forth about whether to put that in the budget, because that's a huge jump in cost. They ultimately did put that figure in the budget, but not necessarily gonna pay that much. They were looking at alternatives where other municipalities fork out a bit more too, developers fork out a bit more. So even though it's in the budget, doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna pay that amount of increase.
Wow.
Um, okay, so that, that was a little back and forth, but also, uh, they passed the upzoning for the Cornell parcel.
Oh, okay, good.
Um, and that was it, really?
Okay. Um, let's see. Anything? Okay, trustee report, okay, so, uh, depending on it's kind of a busy time, but, um, we got a letter from, did everybody see the email from the person concerned about short-term rental? Airbnb? So I thought, all right, maybe, I think it's really time that we all start looking at our code. And Monica, um, you have a hard copy code book?
Yes, I should hand it in, right?
Uh, yeah, it turns out, um, Patrick does not have one, and I said perhaps, um, you would need him your.
I can do that, yes.
Thank you, Monica.
Very lucky, it's a lucky code book.
And, um, I think it's really time, we, we, we know what we've encountered for problems over the past couple of years. And I think it's time we really just start chipping away at some of those, some of the things that we encountered with Lansing Meadows. Some of the things we encountered with the Milcroft situation. And, um, I would like to consider, uh, I'd like everybody to kind of bring a list next time of the areas you think that we need to address. And where you think we might need to continue, well, we need to get, finish the three codes, but what areas of the co, what else? We had had on the list at one point, the solar array. And, um, I was working with Carolyn and Tony on that, and that's pretty far along actually. I don't know how urgent that is, given where they would put it, but I don't know.
We'll try to get into formatting that also. I started at one time and then we kind of, we jumped over to the tree.
Well, I think we want to finish the tree first. Because I think we want to move that along, because that is, that's gonna have a more immediate impact on some of the projects coming along.
And when you want to look at the code, I think you want specifics, like we like we had an issue, one of my issues is, uh, during a subdivision, a major subdivision, we used to set the escrow up as you went into the
Oh, yeah.
final plat where we need to set it up in the preliminary plat so that we don't have to, I don't have to go back and figure hours that uh, were put into the primer or the preliminary plat and try to get that money back. So just, there's just little things like that and, uh, we had a section, what was the one for Lansing Meadows, the?
Well, it had to do with when we, when we did the stop they contested and said, oh no, the building permit's still fine, so we certainly want to close, tighten that up so that there's no con- and then, and I thought with the Milcroft, so it's basically, I, I think the subdivision section and, um, 145 are the, or the, yeah, the subdivision section, like the cluster, all of that stuff that we dealt with, with, um, Milcroft.
And there's some small specifics, like, um, not mentioning that working hours within the village is seven to seven. I mean, that needs to go into performance standards.
Okay, and those are things, so Mike has his list, but we all should have, I'm sure we've all come across some stuff that use some change. Um, one of the things that has somebody brought up, or I was thinking about with the COVID thing is I think that we have restrictions in our code about dry for restaurants.
Yes.
And maybe we want to look at that? I mean, obviously that could create a traffic problem, but that would have to be dealt with at the time. But we may want to reconsider things like that or outdoor dining, I think. We had restrictions on that too, in some way. And we may want to look at that kind of stuff and see whether it's time to be changing that. But that's the kind of thing I'm thinking, um, and parking lot design, we already have some, but, um, all of that with buffer, all of that kind of stuff. But I'd really like people, everybody kind of has a thing that they're interested in, I think, or they're, so, um, just bring your thoughts and, and list to the next meeting, if you would, so that we could start making some decisions about where to go next with, because we're making some decent progress here. We've got sidewalk taken care of, we've got the lighting plan taken care of. I think we're gonna put zeroing in on the tree, would be nice to just keep moving along here. And I think there were some definition in the charter uses too that need some attention, such as like, I think it says mobile homes, well, we now have manufactured homes, I think is kind of the new lingo. So, I mean, just little nits like that, but while we're at it, we might as well do it. So, and since we're not busy.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, Monica, so you have one more meeting with us? All right, so we don't know now, as of today, what's gonna happen, but we must make the assumption, I think, that it will be a live meeting, the next one. Um, if the governor issues another executive order, obviously not. Now, Jim, I think you said you will, you'll be here for the next one, not the one in May?
No, I'll be, no, the next meeting in April, if it's, if it's live in person, I will not be there, if it's another Zoom, I can be. The one on May 9th, I will be physically present.
Okay, so Jim is a no on April 26th. Anybody else?
Well, we're gonna continue hybrid, right, even after the orders up?
Yep.
Yeah, we can.
Vote.
We just can't vote, right?
Yeah.
If we're not physically there.
Yes.
But I think, um, we have to have a live forum, don't we?
I believe you do, don't you Natalie? I saw.
I would imagine so.
I thought that's what was, I was told at one time.
Can you check that for us to be sure? Doing?
Because you, you'd need, you couldn't vote on anything.
You're right, so what would be the point of having the meeting? Unless it was informational only, in which case we would all stay home.
Then it wouldn't be an official meeting, because there would be no way to adjourn it.
Just saying.
We keep our public hearings open, we'll just keep it open. Oh, gosh. I think we have more problems created tonight than answers.
Yeah, I think your, your next meeting will, obviously will have, well, we, we may not have queue the medical back here if, if Kelly can't get the landscaping plan, but.
Well, she has the landscaping plan, but she indicated, I'm willing to wait.
But you could very well have the beers back next meeting. Um, and it's possible that you would have the VA clinic here also.
Oh, the VA clinic, okay. So, um, in terms of the Kewa Mall, that's where they're, they're going?
Right next, right next to Aldi's where Party City was.
Okay, did everybody, can everybody hear that? There's a VA. Go ahead.
No, I didn't hear, where's the VA clinic gonna go?
Right next, you know, where the Party City or Party Central, uh, was right next, it's right next to where Aldi's is going in and the Kewa Mall.
Yeah. Oh, in there, okay.
Sort of near Agway, right? Any other kind of things that, anything else around town we should be aware of?
No.
Okay. All right, April 26th, everybody but Jim. Monica, you have one more meeting to cover for the trustees, are they having a meeting? Or is it April 18th? And then Patrick, you'll take over in May, great. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think I said, but, you know, electronically I can participate or sort of be involved in the 26th meeting, it's just.
So you, so you'll be Zoom, all right, that's good.
So it's just a matter of whether I'm there officially or unofficially.
Well, I, I said to Mike, we've got to change our minutes now to reflect who was here live, who was here via Zoom. Oh, my goodness. Um, actually, one of the things that I plan to do tomorrow is I was going to oh, I, I forget who, Pam Helming is currently our senate, I don't, don't hold me to this, I just know the name, Pam Helming. And then locally, um, it is Anna Kellis. And I thought I would call them and express to them how we would be able to have hybrid meetings, but when people are remote, that they be able to vote. So if you feel so inclined, I will, once I track down the phone numbers, I will send them to you. Because I think the more people they hear, better. Cause that, they've gotta change some of this. They just do. And as you know, we need new people on the planning board, so if you think of anybody, just keep thinking about that. Because once Monica leaves, we'll be down to four people and the minute one of us isn't around, it gets to be a little too close for comfort. And it just isn't a healthy situation. So actually, I, I should have introduced Samantha McDean is on with us and she has expressed some interest and she's just checking in to see whether it's something that might be something she's interested in doing, so. Thank you for coming tonight, Samantha. Okay, I would I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded by Pat. And all in favor?
Aye.
At age 25.
Dea.